Ready.
Okay. When you tell us we're live, we're live.
We're live.
Good morning. The time is now nine thirty-four and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of November tenth, two thousand and twenty is called to order. Due to the COVID nineteen national emergency and in accordance with Public Act two twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty, State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the Whole Meeting is being convened with remote access technology. The first item on the agenda is the approval of Agenda and Order of Priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, if we could have a motion to move the agenda? Moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mertz, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
And Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And if there's any question about where any of us should want to be today, it's wherever Tom McMillan is, at least wherever his background is. Marilyn Schneider, State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn, if you'd do the honors, please.
I will. Thank you. Dr. Cassandra Albridge is the Board's President from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pew is the Board's Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Michelle Fecto is Secretary of the Board. She's from Detroit. Mr. Tom McMillan is the Board's Treasurer. He resides in Oakland Township. Ms. Tiffany Tilly is the NASB delegate from Southfield. That's the Board's Association, National Association of State Boards of Education. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini is Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee. She's from Grand Rapids. Dr. Judy Pritchett is Co-Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee. She's from Washington Township. Ms. Nikki Snyder is the Board's Legislative Committee Member from Dexter. Ms. Brandy Johnson represents the Governor's Office. She's the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce. And the Teacher of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano. He's an English Language Arts Teacher at Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools. And all of these people are on the telephone. So thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Board members and members of the community, COVID nineteen-related updates are the next item on the agenda. I'll be sharing briefly on several areas related to the pandemic in the next fifteen minutes or so. As is often the case, each of these areas has a great deal of underlying detail. COVID nineteen numbers and mitigation efforts. When I updated the Board at our October twenty-second Board Meeting nineteen days ago, we had just passed forty-one million cases worldwide. Yesterday, we had more than fifty million cases worldwide, an increase of nine million cases, approximately a twenty-two percent increase in nineteen days. By our October twenty-second Board Meeting, we had had one point one-three million deaths worldwide. Yesterday, we had one point two-six-oh million deaths, an increase of one hundred thirty-thousand deaths worldwide, more than eleven percent in twenty-two days. When I updated the Board at our October twenty-second Board Meeting, we had had eight-point-three million cases nationally. By yesterday, we had passed ten million cases nationally, an increase of approximately one-point-seven million cases, more than a twenty percent increase in nineteen days. By our October twenty-second meeting, we had had more than two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand deaths nationally. By yesterday, the death count was over two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand deaths nationally, an increase of sixteen-thousand deaths, a seven percent increase in nineteen days. To put the death toll in context, in eight months, we have lost four times the number of U.S. citizens to COVID nineteen than we did in the Vietnam War over a decade. COVID nineteen is now the third-largest cause of death in the United States, trailing only heart disease and cancer, but in front of, according to former CDC Director Thomas Frieden, accidents, injuries, lung disease, diabetes, and Alzheimer's. In Michigan, we have experienced large increases in cases, positivity rates, hospitalization rates, and deaths in many regions across the state. Indeed, unlike the beginning of the summer, when the Upper Peninsula and the Northern Lower Peninsula were in Phase Five, and we were hoping that the rest of the state would soon follow, every region in the state is now in Phase Four. In fact, four of the five counties in the state with the highest per million, with the highest number of cases per million residents are in the Western U.P., a function in part of the interaction with Wisconsin, a state whose cases have shot up and passed Michigan's in the last several weeks and which is now ranked ninth in the country. Both in terms of cases per million people and positivity rates, Michigan has witnessed increases the last five weeks. Hospitalization rates and deaths have increased as well. Let's put this a little bit in temporal context, if we could. In terms of cases, it took a hundred and seventy-two days, almost six months, before Michigan had its first one-hundred-thousand COVID nineteen cases. It took seventy more days, just over two months, before Michigan had its second one-hundred-thousand COVID nineteen cases. The last five Monday-to-Monday case counts. The last five Monday-to-Monday case counts increased by under eight thousand, October fifth through the twelfth, eleven thousand, fourteen thousand, twenty-three thousand, and thirty-two thousand in the last Monday-to-Monday count that ended yesterday. Notwithstanding the increases of the last five weeks, since the advent of the pandemic, we've learned a great deal about the virus, not simply in Michigan, but across the country and across the world. In our return to school in many communities and return to work in many professions, these lessons, which include the wearing of masks, social distancing, frequent washing of hands, regular disinfecting, have helped us mitigate the likelihood of contraction of the virus. More people are wearing masks. More people are taking the virus seriously than in the spring, and this greater engagement and compliance with mitigation efforts have, in fact, helped these communities in which children and families have the option to go to school in person. Unfortunately, however, with the change in the weather, we are staying inside more at close quarters. All else being equal, these conditions drive up COVID numbers. Additionally, there are still those who feel that they're right not to wear a mask should take precedence over someone else's right to stay safe from the virus. To be clear, I wear a mask to keep others safe, not myself. It is others' masks that keep me safe. If I violate the Health Director's Epidemic Order and don't wear a mask, I put others at risk of contracting the virus from me and from others who don't wear masks. I want as many children in as many schools as possible to have the opportunity to have in-person instruction this year for as many days as possible. When we wear masks, socially distance, wash our hands frequently, and disinfect regularly, we extend our ability to have kids in school, at least for those children whose parents are comfortable with them physically in school at any given moment. This is especially important for our educationally vulnerable populations: our severe special needs children, our beginning English language learners, our fledgling readers. At a minimum, they should have the opportunity to learn in school, assuming that their parents make this choice and that the requisite mitigation strategies are firmly in place. Unfortunately, rising case rates, rising positivity rates, rising hospitalization rates, and rising death counts have shut down some schools for short and somewhat longer periods of time and have kept others closed since the beginning of the year. For those who are concerned about your families, friends, and coworkers, wear your masks. For those who are concerned about public health, wear your masks. For those who are concerned about keeping schools open as an opportunity for the education of our children, wear your masks. And for those who are concerned about the economy, wear your masks. Indeed, the National Association of Manufacturers, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, the National Retail Federation, and the Business Roundtable have all called for consistent federal guidelines on face coverings. The importance of wearing masks is incontrovertible. We do so. We save lives. We normalize our existence to the extent possible. When we don't, it's when the trouble begins or continues. MDE Guidance. In the eight months of the pandemic, the department has produced one hundred and thirty-five guidance documents for school districts related in some way to COVID nineteen, separate from our traditional work. In the last couple of weeks, in addition to our typical fall work with districts, we've shared guidance on the critical importance to federal and state school revenue of collecting family income data, educator evaluation guidance, and the status of COVID nineteen phase designations. We have also put out a resource on missing children. To the issue of missing children, at our last Board Meeting, I shared a concern that many educators have expressed across the state and across the country, that some children aren't showing up in any counts in any schools. This would be particularly troubling, particularly alarming in any year, but it is extraordinarily so in the midst of a pandemic, when many children are not attending school in person. With the support of many of our educational partners, MASA, Education Trust Midwest, Middle Cities Education Association, MEA, AFT Michigan, MASB, MAISA, MEMSPA, MAISA, that was a stutter, MASSP, MSBO, and MAPSA, we have begun the Every Student Matters Campaign. Recently, we shared materials with our eight-hundred-and-thirty-two LEAs, our fifty-six ISDs in the state, about how to reconnect with children who may be missing from districts, a reconnection without vilification, without judgment, but simply with the understanding of the need that all children should be connected to school, public, private, parochial, parochial, homeschool, in the state and across the country. We've advocated for districts to take every possible measure to connect with every family whose children they served last year, if they haven't done so already. In many cases, Board, parents will have made other legitimate decisions for their children's education, including homeschooling, and as I mentioned last month, that's fine. What is wrong, however, is the specter of some children not being educated at all. With calls, texts, letters, home visits and connections through Boys and Girls Clubs, faith-based institutions, neighborhood associations, and other individuals and institutions within communities, we need to make every effort to figure out where our children served last year and each community are and where they're being educated this year. Children shouldn't go missing from school. Second, we should encourage, as I mentioned last month, the registration of homeschooled children by those parents who choose to homeschool their children. The ability of school districts and the state to count homeschool students and the ability to count public, private, and parochial school students mean that we are able to estimate the number of students who aren't being educated at all, with the assumption that the numbers of students leaving and entering the state this year are roughly the same. This ability to ensure that all of our children are safe and educated is vital, especially in a pandemic. In the next few weeks, Board will have unofficial fall enrollment numbers, and we'll be able to see the extent to which this phenomenon remains an issue in the state. The teacher shortage. We have a number of efforts underway on the teacher shortage issue, some on research, some on development of data, some with higher education, some on pipeline development. In the last few months, we've pulled together the major education partners in the state, MASA, MASB, Middle Cities, MAISA, MEA, AFT Michigan, MEMSPA, MASSP, MSBO, and MAPSA to work on the issue. You'll hear a bit more later in the morning from Sheila Alice and Leah Breen. The lame duck session. In addition to convening the educational organizations around the teacher shortage issue, we've also brought the organizations together to discuss issues of urgency during the lame duck session, including but not limited to the educator evaluation issue, teacher and support staff shortages, subteachers, and the Open Meetings Act. In today's meeting, we have a number of presentations, some of which are related to the pandemic in whole or in part, some not. Immediately following this presentation, we will welcome Ms. Claire Barnett, Founder and Executive Director of Healthy Schools Network, who will speak to us about important aspects for and consideration of healthy schools. Next, Sheila Alice and Leah Breen will present on the seventh goal of our new state strategic education plan, addressing the teacher shortage. In the late morning, we'll hear from a University of Michigan professor and two public school teachers regarding Impact, an online free program to keep children active during the pandemic. In the afternoon, we'll hear from Kyle Garant and Dr. Diane Golzinski as the Board hears the presentation on reviews draft revised model anti-bullying policy. Board, we had hoped that Dr. Caldune, the state's Chief Medical Officer or Medical Executive, or Dr. Lyon Callo, the state's Epidemiologist, would be able to join us today. We are told that one of them will participate in a State Board Meeting in the near future. We look forward to that. President Albridge, members of the Board, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. And usually it takes a little time to get warmed up in the morning. Good morning, Ms. Snyder. Welcome.
Hi. Just a second.
Well, is that, is that a question?
Yes, can you?
Very good. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, so my question is, well, there's several questions that I, I might wait for other presentations and more information to be gathered, but you said children served last year. Is this how we will determine the number of missing children for this year?
So what we're, what we're interested in understanding is, we, we compare longitudinally our enrollment. We've lost in, in the state a number of young people each year. We've got a declining enrollment in the state, and you would expect that that trend line would be relatively gentle year to year. We're, we're losing perhaps ten thousand children in the state a year based on normal demographic trends. The question becomes, does this year deviate from that gentle trend line? Do you see a substantial decline, particularly in a kindergarten, for example? There, there are a lot of educators that are concerned that young kindergarteners, that, that moms and dads are, are making the decision to keep their children home for, for kindergarten. And look, there, there's, there are a lot of different decisions that go into the ultimate decision of what to do with your child. Our interest is in making sure we have a complete count of public, private, parochial, and homeschool, so that we're able to get a complete count of missing. That's our, that's our feeling.
So that feel is an interesting feel. I know that when you say children served last year, there's definitely data in there that is clear about what we would consider missing children, even with that trend line of about ten thousand per year. You could figure out what's going on there. I don't know that you should call homeschool children prior to that, separate from the children served last year, which can be figured out, missing. I think you want to be careful with that language. You want to be careful with what you're thinking along those lines, because that should be differentiated from, from the task, and I think it's an important one. I do agree with you and very much appreciate your presentation on all children deserve an opportunity of education, but we should differentiate those two numbers. They are very, very, very different. And I acknowledge, and in hearing what you've said this morning, that we can come to that number without going after the homeschooled kids before the pandemic. So that would be my question and comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other, other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Sometimes it takes a, an extra cup of coffee, an extra cup of tea, something exciting in the chat to get us going.
This is Marilyn Schneider interrupting. Apparently, there is a problem with some of the video projecting. Dr. Rice and Nikki, I believe you have your cameras on. I see you, but some people are not able to. So just know we're working on this technical difficulty if you are viewing the meeting and are maybe losing some video capabilities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. One last call for questions or comments. Hearing and seeing none, we will, we will pivot at nine fifty-six to next agenda item, Presentation on Reducing Health Exposure Risks. Ms. Claire Barnett is joining us today to present on reducing health exposure risks. She's the founder and Executive Director of the Healthy Schools Network, a national award-winning organization, serving as a voice for children's environmental health in schools. She came highly recommended by Board Member and Board Vice President Dr. Pamela Pew. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. Our presenter, Ms. Claire Barnett, Founder and Executive Director, Healthy Schools Network. Ms. Barnett, welcome.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate the opportunity. I really want to thank the Board for the invitation and particularly thank Kyle Aaron and Marilyn Schneider for outreach and their organizing logistical support. I also want to thank you, Superintendent Rice, for your really compelling comments and recommendations on COVID and keeping schools open. It is difficult. We, we all, everyone acknowledges that. Our organization is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. We are centered on children's environmental health, and we were founded in nineteen ninety-five. While we're based in New York State, we've won new funding and new environmental health policies to clean up school facilities across the country. We have fostered coalitions in the states and cities, and we link our coalition partners together on a regular basis. We have secured through joint and collaborative action new funds and authorizations for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, as well as for the U.S. Department of Education. On COVID generally, and I'm still on my first slide here, when the COVID nineteen pandemic struck in the spring, all but five states had already closed schools by the end of March, and colleges and universities were sending students home. Understanding the economy cannot reopen until childcare and schools can stay open, it's really essential to have timely, accurate, authoritative federal guidance and information for the states, the tribes, cities, and for all educational settings. All educational settings together, from childcare through K-12 schools to higher education, include about ninety million students and staff. It's a quarter of the U.S. population. The pandemic is a public health crisis, and that means all entities should be prepared to fight infection. Every educational setting, in our view, must have a functional infection prevention and control plan for operating facilities and managing occupants, as well as having the flexible funding to carry out those plans. Only through uniform infection prevention and control will we reduce the significant COVID nineteen infections in educational settings. The tragedy of this particular pandemic is that the problems that have been endemic in public school facilities for decades, challenges with indoor air, challenges with chemical management, challenges in citing mold, lead, PCB, is very often the poorest communities that have already been hit hardest by COVID. The Black, Latinx, and Native American communities typically have the buildings in the worst condition, and that means their children will go back to the poorest schools, facilities often with no ventilation or poor sanitation. A healthy operating environment in schools has always been essential. The conditions of the buildings affect children's health, learning, and thinking, so it, it becomes even more important during a pandemic. Slide two. So the pandemic versus children in schools, we frame the issues in a way that we want to share with the rest of you. First of all, children are not just little adults. This is well-established in pediatric, peer-reviewed literature. They are uniquely vulnerable to environmental hazards. They are still developing. They have specific behaviors, like a hand-to-mouth behavior or playing and sitting on the floor, that may increase their environmental exposures. They also can't recognize threats or articulate exposures. The same way children are not just little adults, schools are not just little offices, and this is a really important concept, because many people in many communities, not unique to New York and certainly not unique to Michigan, just don't think about school buildings in, in a particular way. They are more densely occupied than offices or nursing homes. The occupants of public schools are ninety-five percent women and children. From a biological standpoint, those are two subsets of very vulnerable populations out of the general population. There's typically a mix of processes taking place under one roof. By that, we mean you might have a copy room or custodial storage next to a kindergarten or a third grade. You have a mix of things happening under one roof. Poor facilities mean typically poor indoor air, poor sanitation, growing molds, chemicals, and legacy toxics, legacy toxics being those things really, they come with the infrastructure. There's also a problem across the board, again, not unique to either New York or Michigan. There's no consistent funding typically for school facilities and very little oversight. Moreover, given these issues and given the fact that the conditions of buildings affect children in very profound ways, there are any states that currently require schools to have infection control plans. In our view, public health has stopped at the schoolhouse door for too long. Certainly, all states require children to attend school. The U.S. Government Accountability Office has published that schools have poor ventilation. That just came out in June this year. School and childcare facilities have environmental health problems that impact children. There was a very good report a couple of years ago from the Harvard School of Public Health, which really recapped and covered all the, all the peer-reviewed literature on the different ways in which indoor environments affect children. OSHA, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, does apply, the rights apply to private employers, the private schools, but for public schools, twenty-four states and Michigan is one of them, have adopted a state OSHA plan for public school employees. At the same time, while there are some, there is a system here, imperfect as it is, for addressing public school employee health and safety issues, there aren't any states that actually provide environmental public health services for children who face some of the same risks or have some of the same exposures in these settings. The right-hand side of this slide is an illustration of public health stopping at the schoolhouse door. This is about CO2, carbon dioxide, which we all entail, and I suspect everybody who's in the room has or aren't listening on this webinar has had the experience of being in a small enclosed room and being in a meeting, and suddenly people can't remember where they are on the agenda. That's the effect of too much CO2. Adult critical thinking skills begin a steep decline at a thousand parts-per-million CO2. This classroom shows over four thousand parts-per-million CO2. Research across the U.S. in classrooms has shown CO2 levels often at two thousand to three thousand parts-per-million. So I would encourage you, if you're thinking about declining test scores in certain classroom areas, you might want to check out CO2 just as a starting point. It's an indicator of indoor air pollution and the lack of ventilation. We're going to look quickly at, at a couple of slides following, which illustrate some common environmental health problems in environmental health problems in schools pre-pandemic, and they are continuing to this day. So in this, you have legacy toxics. These are things that come with the building. They're typically high cost to address. For example, asbestos and PCBs in schools can be difficult to deal with. Roof leaks will lead to, as the picture on the left is, lead to crumbling ceilings and walls. That's exposing asbestos and lead paint, and certainly growing molds. Fencloin students are another problem. It's about 5 million children across the country, as one study did in about 2015, 2016. About 5 million children in 12,000 schools are within a mile of a hazardous facility listed in EPA's risk management program. This is a good example of what we call a school citing issue. Michigan has had some wonderful studies done on school citing. The challenge for schools is finding affordable land, and typically, if it's not affordable, it's compromised in some way. This slide is really an example of poor maintenance and poor indoor environment. This can really be medium cost to address and can be prevented. First of all, there's a damp wall in the upper left, a damp wall with a fan on it. But what's happening with the damp wall is the lead paint is peeling off and the fan is blowing lead dust into an elementary classroom here. Below that, a broken toilet, obviously needs repair or replacement. Top right, chemical storage is a huge issue in schools, legacy toxic in schools. That was EPA Region 5, which does cover Michigan, which pioneered a school chemical cleanout program quite a few years ago. And some state environment agencies have picked up and tried to continue that. New York happens to be one of them. We have horrific pictures of, collected by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on mismanaged chemicals in schools, old, worn out, discarded, mislabeled, restored, and so forth. The center picture is maybe puzzling to some people, and this is a custodial closet. And I would hope that if board members and the superintendent and executive staff and the Department of Education are doing school tours, which you probably do from time to time, ask somebody to open up the custodial closet. First of all, it should be locked. Second of all, you don't want it to look like this. This is an example of a dirty closet and inadequate equipment. You can't really have a clean school if you have a dirty closet and poor equipment. So it's something to think about, and it is fixable. Moving on to the next slide here, this is the easiest thing to clean up in the world because it was expensive to do it in the first place. This is what we call a hoarder classroom. The indoor environment challenges here are amazing. It's filled with dust catchers. You wouldn't know what to clean or how to disinfect. Pets are always drawn to food and plants in the classroom. And on this slide, actually off to one side, are a cluster of dirty coffee cups. Airflow is impeded by all the hanging paraphernalia, and it's a fire hazard. So this room is absolutely a public health hazard. And I think one of the things that's important that we have seen in reports from Sweden or Finland or some of the Northern European countries, or even Japan and Korea, who may have had some success in keeping schools open, is they almost never have a classroom that looks like this. The pictures you see in the news are clean, spare, open, airy classrooms. And as wonderful as all these projects are, this room is in fact a public health hazard. So let's think now about what happened, what has happened during the pandemic. It clearly is true that the Black, Latinx, and Native American communities, the poorest communities in the country typically have the worst schools in the country. It's a local tax-based problem. But also what's happened is that as people try to piece together, there has, what has emerged is a fragmented local approach, piecemeal approach to stemming the pandemic that will speed the spread of the virus, deepen disparities, and sow confusion. To that end, my organization, as soon as we saw the Federal Center for Disease Control at the end of February come out with misleading guidance on disinfection, because it's an issue we've worked on for about 15 years, and we were looking for what they were going to say, so we found it. We started putting together what we could do in terms of better guidance using EPA websites and some CDC websites on how do you deal with indoor air quality in schools? How do you deal with cleaning and disinfection in schools? What else do you need to know? That in drinking water, of course, is a major issue, which certainly has been prominent in Michigan, but it's no longer the only state that's found significant issues. In the spring, we began working with many of our partner organizations across the country to develop some sort of consistent response to the pandemic. We have a short list here, which includes the Public Health Administration, the New Jersey Education Association, PTA, the National Association of School Nurses, Asthma and Allergy Foundation, ER lawyers who are of public interest that are New York City specific, Green Seal, which is International Green Certification Group, Learning Disabilities Association of America, and quite a few more. We published our report and called it action, actually, that states must guide schools in slowing the spread of the virus, and that was in the beginning of July. We are now on slide nine. Here's number slide eight. The pandemic versus schools, it's really a public health imperative. Regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not, the public health imperative is that we have to keep children safe at school. All education departments face this. In a pandemic, our view was, and still is, that states must provide school infection prevention and control plans. Those must specify how the building will be operated and maintained to reduce the presence of the virus, and how occupancy rates and occupants will be managed for optimal health and learning. I want to say one thing about the presence of the virus. There's no such thing as mold-free school. It doesn't exist. No such thing as a mold-free house. There's no such thing as a bacteria-free school, and there's not going to be anything such as a virus-free school. The problem here is to minimize, to layer on layers of mitigation, to minimize the presence of any virus or any bacteria in a school building, and to control mold growth. So it's really important to focus on what schools can actually control. You may not be able to control what happens on weekends or vacations or Thanksgiving dinner. You can't control those things. And so there will be community spread, and community spread will impact schools. So schools can focus on what they can absolutely control. And before they open, and this is from our report back in July before people had really opened up, schools have to go through routine inspections, whether it's a fire, annual fire safety inspection or other kinds of inspections. They're essential. They can assess their exterior and interior spaces. If a school has been closed for several months, there have been storms, there have been floods, there have been windstorms, whatever, they need to check the exterior and interior spaces, prioritize their cleanup, and save a list, save that list. That includes looking at drinking water, air, ventilation, plumbing, electrical communications. The other thing that's important is to review and update emergency management plans, particularly reopening schools on a different schedule where you have multiple bus runs coming in and out during the day, perhaps different classes in different areas of the building where they didn't used to be. So it's really important to make sure the emergency management plan takes sort of new arrangements into account. They may be sufficiently robust, so they do that already, but it's a good idea to check. The other thing that's essential, obviously, is inventorying and stocking up on supplies. And certainly, if there is a surge ahead, which I think we're all beginning to see, a very significant surge in infections and hospitalizations, that's going to put an additional burden on schools for finding, whether it's masks and personal protective equipment for key offices and key staff people, or ventilation filters or water filters, or soap and hand sanitizers and paper towels. All of these things are part of operating the school, and all of these are things that schools can control. So to stay open, if all these things have taken place, you need to have a schedule of maintaining and cleaning the facility, a schedule for regular pest control inspections and spot treatments if that's necessary, and regular checking up on the HVAC, that's heating, ventilating, air conditioning, HVAC, checking up on the HVAC system, and tracking and responding to any facility complaints. Buildings don't take care of themselves. If there's a broken window, or if there's a hole that opens up in the roof, the building is not going to fix that by itself. Buildings take constant maintenance. You just have to keep on top of it. The other thing is to expect and use the closure time. There are schools, we're certainly aware of them, in upstate New York, where I am working right now. In our neighborhood, where the building was fine, but there's been a new small outbreak of infections, and they want to close for a week. Closing for a week is a time to work on the building. It's very difficult to do any kind of maintenance and repair, serious maintenance or repair on a fully occupied building that's loaded with women and children. It also can be dangerous for the occupants. So use that list that you may have collected during the summer, and use the closure time as soon as you can to do those routine maintenance jobs or deep cleaning jobs that you didn't get time to do during the week. Next slide. Going to talk here a little bit about cleaning, sanitizing, and disinfecting. And they aren't all the same processes. Cleaning with soap and water will decrease the presence of the human coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2, on surfaces and objects, just the way it works on hand washing. Sanitizing lowers the number of germs, to public health terms, so restaurants and food prep areas sanitize. They keep germs down to a safe level. Sanitizing products are not registered to kill viruses. You can't use them interchangeably. Disinfectants are in fact registered by EPA as antimicrobial pesticides, and they will deactivate the viruses on surfaces. But you have to remember, the surface isn't disinfected forever. Every time a virus, you know, the virus comes back every single time a dirty hand or a droplet touches the surface. And non-disinfectants kill the coronavirus. Some are effective against other viruses, not necessarily the coronavirus. So you really need to read and follow the directions carefully, and follow all precautions carefully. In terms of asthma, a number of disinfectants are actually, their active ingredients are considered asthma gems. So they're chemicals that will cause or trigger asthma. So watch out for chemical irritants and heavily scented products, and buy safer, low odor products. We have found through hard experience, there's a big caution on the use of fogs, misters, and sprayers, particularly on schools, inside schools and childcare and school buses. It's very easy to overuse or underuse disinfectants. If you overuse them, you're really polluting the air through the use of misting and fogging these hazardous chemicals. If you're underusing them, they're not going to work, because they have to be used in a certain concentration and sit for a certain period of time. So once again, you have to read and follow the directions exactly. And because they are antimicrobial pesticides, all disinfecting products are marked not for use by children, and that includes disinfecting wipes. Next slide. My office, quite a number of years ago, literally almost 20 years ago, began working on requiring the use of third-party certified green cleaning products in schools. We accomplished that in 2005 in New York State, where a Republican governor, who liked green buildings, understood that you have to use green products inside a green building, which is pretty logical. So in 2005, there was a governor's executive order for the state agencies and a governor's program bill that was enacted, requiring all public and all private schools to use third-party certified green cleaning products. And they do. It's been a real breakthrough in terms of cleaning up indoor environments. And we certainly recommend it to many, all the states and many of the districts. Currently, it's our understanding that 11 states plus the District of Columbia either require the use of third-party certified green cleaning products in schools, and often by their government agencies as well. The website that's cited here, greencleaningforhealthyschools.org, is one that we maintain. It was originally set up with the National Education Association, ASME, International Union, PTA, Association of School Business Officials, and a number of other organizations. So what that web provides is tip sheets and free training materials, and really endorsements by a number of school constituency groups. Next slide, staying open, cleaning and disinfecting. The tip on cleaning and disinfecting is you always have to clean before you disinfect, which I'm pretty sure a lot of people don't really get, and this is part of going back to reading the directions. You can only apply a disinfectant to a clean surface if it's going to work. Disinfectants do not clean and will not disinfect heavy soil. So what's featured here on this slide are examples from two different states, the state of Washington, which has a wonderful program out of the Department of Health on cleaning for healthy schools, as well as New York, which began this movement many, many years ago, and published in 2010, actually, on cleaning in the presence of a flu virus. So there's a lot of information out there and a lot of success in a number of states, which we certainly recommend to you if you haven't looked at it yet. Disinfectants have become harder, both easier to find and harder to find, probably a little harder because everybody's going to use them. EPA puts the human coronavirus on what it calls an N-list, which currently has more than 500 products listed on it. I don't know of any groups that have researched that list thoroughly enough to tell you if all of those products were recently put onto a list by EPA since the beginning of April. It used to be a list of about 200 to 300 products, if all of those have gone through adequate assessment for human health. I do know, however, that you can find safer disinfectants on that N-list. And we have worked for many years, as a number of states have, with a group called the Responsible Purchasing Network, which is based in Oakland, California, which calls the list for safer disinfectants by excluding high-hazard products. So in terms of high-touch surfaces and what you do apply disinfectants to on a scheduled basis, might be things like desktops and chairs, lunchroom tables and chairs, door handles, kitchen and bathroom faucets, light switches, handles on equipment, and so forth. This particular list comes from the New York State list that's on that slide. Let's turn now to indoor air and ventilation. Indoor air really reflects everything that's ever gone right or wrong with a building. If the setting is bad, it's on a contaminated site, there are vapor intrusions, or industrial facilities next door, or high traffic next to an airport, everything affects indoor air, as well as the maintenance of the building. Schools' lack of indoor air quality controls has been known for years. It's been documented through USGAO and by EPA for many, many years. The 2020 report in June documented that by surveying schools across the country, there were at least 36,000 public school buildings, that's at least a third of them, needed HVAC system, heating, ventilation, air conditioning system upgrades, or either updated or replaced. At about the same time, the CDC decided, and the National Academy has published that the SARS-CoV-2 virus could be transmitted through the air. And part of that is droplets, but part of that, which is what the sneeze shows, are the heavy droplets, but part of that is sort of the aerosolized particles, really, you know, superfine mist of particles. know, superfine mist of particles that will travel many, a great distance. So reducing risk inside schools really includes not just math and distance, but it also includes making sure you can get fresh air in, that you can vent stale air out, and you have better HVAC systems, and filters, and/or room cleaners. ASHRAE, American Society of Heating and Refrigeration Air Conditioning Engineers, has put together its own academic task force. I'm sure you have representatives of ASHRAE in Michigan, all the states do. They've done fabulous work on reopening schools and universities, incredibly detailed checklists, which I certainly recommend to you if the department hasn't used these yet. The other thing that we recommend is, US EPA has gone out of its way to produce a very significant series of webinars on maintaining healthy indoor environments in schools during the pandemic. I think they're up to three, four, or five at this point, they are all archived, and we really recommend them to you. Next slide. This is a very complicated issue on COVID, and what it actually means, and how do you know when people have it? Particularly, how do school nurses know? What are the typical symptoms of COVID-19? Well, is it the flu, or does somebody have a cold, do they have allergy, or in fact, are they reacting to poor indoor air quality? So this particular chart came from one of our partners, a peer group piece from the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America, which they allowed us to put into our pandemic report back in July. They have terrific information on this, and it's really important to take a good look at this, and I would get in touch with them to see if they have updated that, or we will help you do that. What I want to show you on the next slide, however, is that indoor air pollution and health symptoms make a difference to children. So when you suspect a school has indoor air quality problems, there are many ways to take a look at that. Well, first of all, if the roof has been leaking, or the building smells dank or damp, or if it's been recently flooded. If the floors are newly resurfaced, painted, or renovated, and have not aired out, the building's fully carpeted. Carpeting in schools holds a lot of dirt. If you notice a lot of heavy odors clinging to your clothing after attending school for a full day, particularly if children have very specific health or learning difficulties only in the building, and not necessarily during days off or another setting, it's a signal of, because environmental exposures are time and place sensitive, it would be an indicator of something needs to be taken a look at. The symptom list on the right-hand side of the slide is actually from US EPA's Indoor Air Quality Tools for Schools by UTFS Kit, that's been around for a long time. So whether it's a runny nose, or a nose bleed, or a cough, or shortness of breath, headache, fatigue, fever, and so forth, there are different causes for some of these examples. So for example, with rhinitis, runny nose and nasal congestion, down at the bottom of the slide, according to EPA, that could be related to sick building syndrome, to combustion byproducts, biological contamination, VOCs, toxic organic compounds, not heavy metals, but even tobacco smoke. But what I've done is I've added here, because on the previous slide, we know from the Asthma and Allergy Foundation, and from quite a bit of other work, that COVID itself has some typical symptoms, and some of these line up with symptoms of indoor air pollution. So it's not a simple task. What you want to do, this clearly shows that it makes a difference in many ways, how schools manage their buildings, because everything that goes right and wrong with the building is eventually reflected in indoor air. If you can eliminate some of these problems in the school population, you've done a lot for public health, and a lot for learning. So what can states and communities and parents really do? What can you ask of schools? We hope that states and communities will ask them and insist they control what they can control. They invest in indoor air quality and ventilation, they invest in better drinking water, they invest in cleaning and disinfecting, they invest in making sure there's a connection with local public health in terms of recording illnesses and absenteeism, and staying closely in touch with local public health officials during the pandemic. And we certainly hope they stay on top of supplies and staffing for maintaining the building. It's difficult to do, but all of us are going to have to do it for a long time. So on this slide, there's a short list of selected resources we would recommend to you, certainly including US EPA, the Harvard School of Public Health Report called Schools for Health, it's a short read, and it is a free download, it's really terrific. And I'll close in the next slide by giving you a suggestion about moving ahead, irrespective of whether there's a pandemic or not. I think it's really important for state departments of education and state boards of education to get a handle on school facilities, because they do make a critical difference for children's health, thinking, and learning. This is one example, and to our knowledge, the only state that's done it, and it happened 25 something years ago. The New York State Board of Regents felt compelled, after a series of public hearings, to convene an advisory committee on school environments, and they did. It took about two years, and they put together a masterful report that included guiding principles that begin, "Every child has the right to an environmentally safe and healthy school that's cleaning, good repair," followed up with 62 different action items. If we looked at that report today, which we have, a number of those things have been accomplished, and a number haven't. But in any event, the report still needs to be updated, because we know more about children, we know more about facilities, and we know more about hazards. So this is a long-term effort, but it's certainly set the stage within our state, and has guided the American Public Health Association, and a number of other states in some of the issues that might want to get a handle on. Next slide. So we really encourage you to take up the issue of healthy school facilities in the state of Michigan, and we invite you to join us for National Healthy Schools Day. The 19th Annual National Healthy Schools Day will be Tuesday, April 6. We do not give people instructions on what to do, or how to do it, but we do give them tips and sample handouts, and things that they might think about, how to do a building tour, for example, and look for environmental hazards, or give a school a particular thank you for having done a great job on indoor air, or a great job on cleaning. It's a wonderful time to say thanks, and say congratulations for doing a great job. And with that, I will close. This is Healthy Schools Network, this is how to reach us. And at the bottom of the slide, we have been so honored by some of the people who appreciated our work, and we wanted to give you a short list here. Thank you again so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Any questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Pugh, is that leaning in for a question or a comment? Okay, there you go.
Am I off mute? I can't.
You are off mute now, yes.
My computer was freezing, I'm sorry, I couldn't write comments in. I just want to thank Claire for coming. I've had the opportunity to now work with Claire for some years, and I was just looking at some of my previous notes in this space, and it was in early March, Claire, that I first reached out to you, or you reached out to me, and we were talking about sanitizing buildings. And then I recall on March 11, we were on a call with NASB, National Association of State School Boards, Boards of Education, and we were talking about what would happen if schools had to close, and it was the day after that Michigan schools closed, I think Ohio and Maryland came that day. And then when this discussion around COVID being airborne, SARS veiled to being airborne, that I was able to call upon you, and we were able to quickly in July pull together a convening that really was able to educate schools, and the general public, on the fact that COVID is airborne. So I just want to appreciate you for that, as well as the work that we've done in the past for LED, and thank you for your time, and hoping that you can continue to work with us, as well as schools. And we have had ASHRAE to come before us, and the Department of Education has reached out to them, and so there is some work that's going on there. But really, I just want the public and parents to know that these are not afterthoughts, these are things that we've been thinking about, having a public health background, having a chemical engineering background, as things have come to me, I've taken them to the department, to Dr. Rice, and just grateful and thankful that we've been able to think about these things, and now really helping our districts to think about them, because they can't be afterthoughts. So again, it's just great to have a resource and a friend such as yourself.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Yes, thank you very much for that, and be happy to continue to help in any way that we can. I just think it's really important for schools to, you know, there's so little that you can control in life sometimes, particularly in the education field, and I think, you know, Dr. Rice indicated some of those things at the beginning, and there's open comments, they can control indoor air, you can control a lot of things inside schools, and if you can control what you can control, you do have a better shot of keeping, staying open
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. President Obrich?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo Pam's gratitude. I think this was really important information, not only during a pandemic, but at all times to remember that the health and safety of our school environments is critical to ensuring kids have an environment to learn in, that they can focus on learning and not other issues. So just wanted to thank you very much for taking the time to present this information to the State Board of Education.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, President Obrich. Other comments or questions of board members? Comments or questions of board members?
Michelle, can you hear me? Yes, yeah, okay. I just wanted to echo what both Cam and Cassandra have said. I think this is really critical information, and we don't hear enough of it. You know, I know oftentimes, my husband's a teacher, and when he had environmental issues at his school, you know, he was told by DHHS that they don't come into schools unless they're invited by a superintendent, and then when he called OSHA, OSHA was saying, "No, we don't do schools." So finding a way, well, we got OSHA to eventually, with the help of our state, to come in, but there's a resistance, it seems, to having this sort of oversight in schools, or, you know, or just maybe it's a systemic problem, just the way the system is built, in getting that type of necessary oversight in. I'm wondering if there's state legislation, or models in other states that we should be looking at to provide, that would just help facilitate better oversight?
I think that's a terrific question. The states are, there really aren't any two states alike in how they take a look at urban health and safety. OSHA provides some, you know, leveling of a background in about half of the state, but that's not the same as providing environmental health and safety assurances for children. It helps, but it's not really quite the same thing. I would encourage, the way we have encouraged here in New York, I would encourage the State Department of Education, the Board with the State Health Department, to take a look at that issue, given your own sets of regulations and how you operate facilities, because Michigan and New York are not at all the same in how they operate facilities. We have a very robust school facilities office here in New York, and it hands out more than $2 billion a year on school facilities. I don't think that's happening in Michigan. And so I think you need to look pretty carefully at what your assets are going into this, and where you feel your biggest gaps are. So I'd really recommend a small task force or something to take a look at that. There are some public policy statements that have been adopted by the American Public Health Association, and things that the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists, the FTE, is taking a look at. It might be helpful to engage with public health folks on any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
Yeah, that was a good question, Michelle, because I was going to point that out. Even when we were looking at the lead levels in the water in the schools in Flint, we still didn't go as far as we needed to, as it relates to reducing environmental exposures. There are a package of bills that are out with Senator Stephanie Chang, the ABCs of Education Plan, and it looks at a multitude of environmental risk factors, indoor, as well as exposures, citing of schools, that are being looked at, all the way to looking at the water quality in schools. And so I think that that's something that we probably should pay close attention to as well.
I might comment that one of the things that we discussed, we and our national partners just, as we were putting together a pandemic report for, to release in July, was if schools in fact, if states provided them with a template infection prevention and control plan, where would that go? Would a local board adopt that into it? I think all school districts everywhere have all hazard emergency management plans. So would an infection control plan logically fit inside an all hazards plan? It might, or it might be a standalone. But a standalone public health document adopted by a local school district, or a private school board for that matter, could incorporate some features, I would think, of a public health necessity to take a look at the duty of care.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any other questions or comments from board members? If not, I think I'll do a quick benediction. Ms. Barnett, you mentioned that this is a decades-old issue of school infrastructure in the country. There's no question about that. I can remember sloshing through the hallways in DC public schools as a teacher in the 80s. We've not improved our school infrastructure in the country in the last third of a century. I would argue that the school infrastructure has gotten worse in the last third of a century, because our last major building effort in this country was associated with trying to keep up with the baby boom in the early 70s. We've not had another major effort to address school infrastructure in almost five decades in this country. It's not to say that there aren't local efforts, there are. There are many local bond efforts to address local school issues. But you mentioned $2 billion a year in the state of New York. New York is a relative anomaly in that regard. Most states, as you point out, do this locally. There is not a state involvement in infrastructure. And the problem with it solely being at the local level is that the distribution of resources are a function of local property wealth, local property tax base, and that is a very unequal distribution of resources, and tends to disfavor working class and poor children. You mentioned the USGEO report. These USGEO reports go back, as you point out, decades. It's time as a nation to do something. something about HVAC systems, about mechanical systems in our schools. Schools are aging. We have 50 million plus public school children in the country. We have a responsibility to address these systems in a more systematic way. And the idea that it can be done at a local level, or even at a state level, I think is perhaps a little bit more optimistic than ought to be the case. There are many things that can be done, as you point out legitimately, at the local and the state level. But we really need an infusion of support from the feds on school infrastructure to help us make more fair the distribution of resources when it comes to health, safety, and wellness in this country. This from a person who has spent his career in public schools, many of which haven't been overly well funded, serving children who haven't been overly well served by the underfunded schools. So
You're, you're, you're absolutely right about that. And I did not include in the presentation, you're probably, the Michigan board and your department probably well aware, there is a two half bill called Rebuild America Schools Act. If it were enacted and appropriations followed, it would spend a call for about $100 billion over 10 years to reinvest in public school facilities. It did pass the House. It is sitting quietly in the Senate. There have been a couple of efforts, as you know, to provide school bailout in the current pandemic here. We were hoping to see something happen, emergency funding for water and ventilating systems, but that hasn't materialized either. One of the efforts we have been spearheading was to reinvest in and expand the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's grants program. They've had a long series of, a long history, very productive history, constructive history, of providing education, training, and demonstration grants on school physical environments, starting with indoor air, molds and citing, and chemical management, pest pest control, cleaning products, and so forth. They have a long history of training programs on this, on this particular field. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to get that funded, even, even that funded, which is $100 billion over 10 years. It's less than a rounding error. It's about $50 million a year. But there has been significant resistance to doing these things in Congress.
Thank you. There, there is a resistance. Perhaps as we look at trying to rebuild an economy that's been adversely affected by COVID, perhaps we look at rebuilding our mechanical systems, our HVAC systems in local school districts across the country. These should be on a replacement rotation, the way all capital assets should be. They're, in fact, more important than many capital assets, because unlike some capital assets, they actually do have a relationship to health, safety, and wellness. Ms. Fecto writes, Ms. Fecto, if you'd like to read your question, actually.
Sure. I guess it was to, to Brandy. I'm just wondering, I thought there was some state regulation about having these plans. I don't know if it was more employer, employee based, not necessarily school based, but to have some sort of a infection control plan or COVID. Do those go to the, how does that work? Do those go to the state? Do they get reviewed? Are they enforced by OSHA? Like, how does, how does that work?
Sure. I'm happy to talk about that. So unfortunately, the Supreme Court ruling invalidated Executive Order 2020-142, which laid out those requirements for submitting their COVID-19 response and preparedness plans. That being said, I would say that school districts have overwhelmingly indicated they plan to continue with their plans and written and enforce them as such. So once those boards, those plans were adopted by local school boards, which generally happened in August, that became local policy. And so school boards have have been still utilizing, implementing, and enforcing those plans. The MDHS epidemic orders and the MiOSHA emergency rules that were subsequently issued post the Supreme Court ruling do require some of the most substantive parts of Executive 142, including mandating facial coverings and putting restrictions on gatherings. And so if, if a school district were to violate the MiOSHA emergency rules, which indicate that the schools as workplaces need to be safe and have a series of mitigation strategies, an employee could certainly report to MiOSHA a violation and they would investigate it, just like any other employer. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Dr. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
And then I took to Michelle's question, I do thank the governor's office and the panel that did at least give better guidance to the schools as it relates to school environments. And as we're talking about the state, because, because we talked about federal funding and appropriations, I just, we would be remiss if we didn't talk about here in the state of Michigan, that our schools are inadequately funded. And I don't know, Dr. Rice, you might have said this, and that we have had funding that has gone to developers that could have helped and been have contributed to the improvement of buildings. So as we talk about funding, we also have to talk about state appropriations and how we better appropriate funding for schools to be better prepared for the environmental risk exposures, especially in this time of COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other, other thoughts from other board members? Going once, twice, thrice. Ms. Barnett, we appreciate you being with us today. Thank you very much for your presentation. And we look forward to staying in touch with you and working with you, not simply in a COVID era, but beyond that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Board members, the next agenda item is the monthly presentation on the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, increasing the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. The presentation on the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan will highlight the seventh goal in the Strategic Education Plan to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. It will include metrics to help better understand where the state is on the teacher shortage. Following the presentation, we will engage in further conversation with the board about opportunities to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. This is an informational presentation. It does not require board action. Presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, the Inestimable Chief Deputy Superintendent in the Michigan Department of Education, and Ms. Leah Breen, the Outstanding Director of the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Ladies, good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Rice, and thank you very much for that illustrative welcoming and description of both Mrs. Breen and myself. Good morning to everyone. Today's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan presentation is the third in a series on the goals and metrics included in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. And Mrs. Leah Breen and I appreciate the opportunity to continue this series of presentations to the State Board of Education. The eight goals in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan are listed on the slide that you see in front of you. During the September State Board of Education meeting, we engaged in our first presentation on metrics and chose the fifth goal listed on the slide, increase the percentage of students who graduate from high school. What you, during last month's State Board of Education meeting, we provided our second presentation on metrics and chose the first goal that you see listed on this slide, expand early childhood learning opportunities. Both presentations included four years of metrics data covering from 2015 to 2019 that reflected all students as well as groups of students where the data were available. The data presented showed positive trends in increasing graduation rates, as well as expanding early childhood opportunities for children in Michigan. Today's presentation, as Dr. Rice mentioned, will focus on the seventh goal listed on this slide, increase the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage. For this goal, Mrs. Breen will present data for the metrics listed on this slide. And in keeping with the two previous presentations, multiple years of data will be presented reflecting years 2016 through 2020, as well as the difference within these years, and an indication of how the data are trending. Additionally, Mrs. Breen will share a variety of different efforts to increase the number of certified teachers in the areas of shortage in our state. We respectfully request that board members please hold off on your questions and comments until the end of the presentation. I'll send it back to Dr. Rice, who will lead a discussion, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments then. And so now I would like to welcome Mrs. Breen to begin the metrics presentation. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much for that introduction. The first metric that we're going to talk about is the number of endorsements by critical shortage areas. We will look at an examination of change over the last five years for all of these metrics, just as we did in past presentations. Before we take a look at the data, I want to make sure we understand a couple of the terms here. So throughout this presentation, if we could go back one, throughout this presentation, we'll use the terms endorsements, positions, and FTEs. And so the numbers aren't going to look the same from slide to slide. It's dependent on the metric. For this first dataset, we're using endorsements, which are the, essentially the number of subject areas that are issued to teachers. So for example, I am one teacher, and I may have three endorsements. I have, I may have math, science, and English, and I may have three assignments. And so we'll talk about each of those as we go through. And we also are going to talk about critical shortage areas throughout this presentation as our focus for the metrics. The critical shortage area that we're using are the list of content areas that we provide to the federal government for the purposes of student loan forgiveness. And we derive that from any area in which the prior year we issued a permit. So if we, if a school district couldn't find an appropriately certified and endorsed educator and had to obtain a substitute permit, they go on our critical shortage list for federal loan forgiveness, and that's where the shortage areas came from. Forward one. So we split them into the areas that we know, kind of our historical areas versus newer areas. So the historical areas are ones that you're used to seeing and hearing about from districts most frequently over multiple years, and that's career and technical education, or CTE, English as a second language, or ESL, mathematics, the sciences, special education, and world languages.
I don't know. I'm trying to make sure I have the money in there.
Oh, no, I can, I can do without a Michigan first name.
Next slide, please.
What do you, I don't understand.
So if we look at the first dataset.
I'm sorry, Leah, this is Carolyn. Can people please check their microphones to make sure they're muted? Thank you.
No, MSU.
Michelle, Michelle, please mute.
Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I thought it was me.
Okay. If we take a look at the first slide, where we're looking at the number of endorsements by our critical shortage areas, you'll see the CTE is broken down into several different areas, the first row being CTE other, which is a bucket of endorsements that doesn't fit into larger categories. We have computer science, family and consumer sciences, and industrial and technology education. You'll see that we looked at data from 2016 as our base year. We moved forward each year as we move column to by column to the right. And in the final column, we have the four-year difference from 2016 to 2020. So the blue arrow that you're seeing next to the top row, CTE other, indicates that there is a four-year difference of 100 or more. And our next click will demonstrate our decrease of 100 and more in computer science and family and consumer sciences. And the last click will indicate what we're considering neutral areas. That is that they don't have a difference of 100 or more in either direction, that we consider that fairly stable over time. Okay, moving forward. And so if we take a look at this one, we see ESL in the top row with a 400, four-year difference of 687. Bilingual education and special education will be neutral, and mathematics, the sciences, and world languages will have decreases greater than 100. And here's where it's important to note that these four-year differences really mean something different for each endorsement area. So for example, in bilingual education, a four-year difference of negative 42 is much more significant than the negative 35 for your difference you see for special education. Special education, there are 44,000 endorsements, and we lost 35 over time. ESL, there are 1,000 endorsements, and we lost 42 over time. Next slide, please. So now we'll take a look at the more recent endorsement areas. These are the arts and music, elementary education, guidance and counseling, health and fitness, library media, language arts, psychology, and social studies. These are areas that we hear increasingly about shortages from our local districts. Starting here with our decreases, first click please, or increases, my apologies. So art, music, visual, and dance, we have had a four-year difference of over 100. It's about 503. And there you'll see our decreases in elementary, guidance and counseling, health and physical fitness, phys ed, and instructional library media. And we stay fairly neutral over time on health. Next slide, please. Same here. So we first look at the areas of increase greater than 100. On this slide, we don't have any. Go to the decreases greater than 100, which is in every area. Next slide, please. Okay. Moving forward, the next metric that we're going to review are the number of positions filled by appropriately certified educators assigned to subject areas listed within the critical shortage list. So again, we're looking at critical shortage areas. That's how we sorted them for you. This time, we're looking at positions instead of endorsements. So these are actually where teachers have been assigned, and we're looking specifically by appropriately certified educators, as opposed to vacancies or areas that are temporarily filled with permits or assigned with individuals who are not appropriately certified. The goal to be having, of course, 100% of all positions appropriately filled with certified educators. Next slide, please. So we've grouped the data together because this actually, this one slide will fulfill two metrics. But wait, if we could click one more time, the metric that we're looking for specifically in this one is the number permanently assigned and certified to teach the position. So as you can see, in 2016, we started with 83,211 permanently assigned and appropriately certified to teach the position, which was about 94.6%. So we moved to the right, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and we look at our four-year difference. We have had a decline, negative 2.6 percentage points in that far right column of educators that are permanently assigned and appropriately certified to teach their position. However, it's also important to notice that we have an increase in the total number of teachers that are assigned to positions within school buildings by about 3,494. So we actually characterize this slide as hopeful. While we do have a little bit decline in the permanently assigned and appropriately certified to teach the position, we have had an increase in teachers. So the goal here is to certainly So the goal here is to certainly close the gap and keep up with the number of assignments in the building with appropriately certified teachers. Next slide. So we're going to see that chart again, but this time we're going to be looking at the bottom two rows. We're going to be looking at the number of positions on the critical shortage list that are reported as vacant. So to get the whole picture of the workforce, you need to see appropriately certified and filled, and then we need to look at the vacant categories. So we'll move forward and take a peek at that. And I'm actually going to look at that bottom row first where it says vacant positions. So in 2016, school districts reported during their rep collection that they had 115 vacant positions. So these are, this is an under-reported number. It only includes positions that are still funded by the district. But at the time that data are collected, it is standing empty. They don't have a body in that classroom. They could not find a substitute teacher. It is still actively posted and they are trying to fill the position, but it is vacant. There is not a person there. So often, those types of positions are actually eliminated, which means they stop being funded. So if I, as a school district, have been wanting to offer American Sign Language in my school district for a couple of years, that position has remained vacant because I can't find somebody to fill it and I can't even find somebody to teach it on a substitute teaching permit, I will often defund that position and instead offer something like German. So this position doesn't, this row doesn't truly present the positions that districts would like to fill. It's only the ones that they still have hopes of filling. Up one row from that are also the positions that we kind of put in this vacant arena because they either are temporarily assigned with substitute teachers or they have somebody in that assignment that is not appropriately credentialed, meaning that they're not teaching in their subject area and they don't have a permit for teaching in their subject area. So those two together comprise the vacant positions with a goal of being 0% in those areas and 100% in our top row of permanently assigned and certified to teach the position. Next slide, please. So we are really excited to present this metric to you in the future. We want to look at the retention rate of appropriately certified educators assigned to subject areas because we know that increasing the number of certified teachers in the workforce, which is our overall goal, means that we also have to retain our appropriately certified educators. So we're working in partnership with SEPI to develop the data on this, and we will bring it back to you as soon as that's available. And the last metric that we're going to look at today is the percent of teachers by ethnicity compared to percent of students by ethnicity. So this is a little bit different than the shortage areas that we looked at before. But we know that we consider our diverse teacher candidates to be an area of shortage, right? We have under-representation of teachers that look like our students. And so we want to talk about that metric with the board today and hope that we can impact change in having a more representative teacher workforce. Moving forward, please. So this is broken down by school year and race/ethnicity. So again, starting in 2016, the top row that you'll see, where I'm going to look at the very first data point in 2016, it says .79. So what that means is .79% of our teachers are Asian. And in 2016, 3.17% of our students were Asian. So we can look forward and we can see those data reflected in 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020. And then we see the four-year percentage of change. So for teachers of Asian ethnicity and race, we decrease by .01%. And by students, we increase by .33%. We can go down the next set of data and we see black or African-American teacher to student data. So this is one of the areas certainly where our students are not well represented. In 2020, we had 6.91% of our teachers were black or African-American, and our students were 17.63% black or African-American. Moving forward. So in these two datasets, we have Hispanic or Latino in the top dataset, Native American or Alaska native, and the bottom datasets. And the percent change over time. So we are seeing an increase in Hispanic or Latino teachers of 1.9, students, pardon me, teachers and students, but students in particular of 1.29% from 2016 to 2020, and a slight decrease in Native American or Alaska native. Next slide. And finally, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. Very small representation of our student populations in both. Two or more races are categorized on the top dataset here and white on the bottom. Two or more races in 2020, we had .31% of our teachers represented and 4.38 of our student population. And in white, we have 90% of our teachers are white and 65.64% of our students. These data probably are not surprising to any of you. And so this slide is interesting. This technically isn't one of our metrics, but we really liked the way that these data are displayed and thought that you would find it interesting. This is teacher and students by school year and race/ethnicity, and we did a ratio. So if I look at, I'll start with the 2016 column. And I'll look at the first row, which is Asian. What this means is the number of students per teacher. So currently, we have 70.9 students, Asian students per one teacher. Black or African-American students. And I'm going to flip over to the 2020 column so we can look at the more current data. We have 43.4 black or African-American students compared to one teacher. Hispanic or Latino, 114 to 1. Native American or Alaska native, 40 to 1. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, 12 to 1. Two or more races, 238 to 1. White, 12 to 1. So this really puts the data that you saw in the last few slides in a different perspective here and definitely demonstrates the difference in the distribution of our, the race and ethnicity of our teachers versus our students. Next slide, please. And so as Dr. Rice and Ms. Alice mentioned, we have a number of efforts related to increasing the numbers of certified teachers in our areas of shortage. This is something that we've been working very hard at over time. We will continue to work very hard at. We have a variety of strategic plans and initiatives that address this. I just looked at a few of these to mention today. As you may know, about two years ago, the Department of Education started hosting job fairs. Due to COVID, we have now changed those to virtual job fairs where we are connecting our local school districts with staff in order to fill vacant positions throughout the year. We do them before school starts, but we also do them during the year in case there are vacant positions in the existing year and to recruit for future years. We, as an agency, have prioritized funding for recruitment for the past two or three years, which is very exciting. We have labeled our recruitment programs, "Growing Michigan Educators." These are our Grow Your Own programs. We're excited to announce that we have them to recruit high school students, to recruit career changers, to recruit paraprofessionals. We have unique pathways to fit unique needs across our state to ensure that we're getting candidates from all areas that we can entice candidates. We continue to fund our Proud Michigan Educator Campaign, which is not only one of our recruitment initiatives, but our retention initiatives. As I mentioned, the retention is just as important as the recruitment initiatives. So recognizing and honoring our wonderful educators that we have throughout the state. We work consistently to encourage and facilitate K-12 and higher education partnerships. So this is to place candidates directly out of teacher preparation programs into schools. We have schools within schools where our teacher candidates work directly with students within the school setting and take their college coursework there. Anything to encourage those partnerships for long-term placement and retention of teachers. We also recently have integrated hiring and retention data into MyKIP, which the board has heard about before, MyKIP. And in doing so, we're able to feed data back to school districts for them to review. So they're able to look at the ethnicity of the candidates that they hire, the retention of the teachers that they have on staff. They can break and change their data a number of different ways, and they can compare it to the state average to see how they're doing, if they want to, with other states. When they look at it, they'll also have the option to choose database strategies. So if they indicate that, if looking at their data, they see that they have extraordinarily high turnover in a building or within their district, they have the opportunity to select database strategies that are intended to reduce the retention issues within their state. And we've worked with a number of partners to develop this to support our local education agencies. So that's really exciting. And we have been sharing data with our educator preparation institutions to inform them about areas of shortage, both regionally and in content areas, so that when they are helping candidates choose their areas of endorsement, they can provide them with feedback about areas regionally and in content area of shortage. So for example, if a student teacher really wants to have a special education endorsement, they can actually look across the state now and see areas, which would be pretty much everywhere in our state, but areas where districts desperately are in need of those teachers and areas in which they might want to do their student teaching with hopes of being moved to placement on staff after completing their student teaching. It's a little bit different. When I went through student teaching, it was you student taught somewhere and they may or may not have an opening for you and you still had to go look for a job. But increasingly, if you're a student teaching candidate, you can be hired on where you are placed for many of these assignments. Additionally, we've been focusing on the recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. We have an entire strategic plan that's related to that. We've been working with some of our regional partners to develop research-based strategies for recruitment and retention of diverse candidates. And also, we've been paying attention to what our data is telling us about those candidates. So we are in the progress, in the process of developing things like communities of practice where we support our educators of color coming together, working together to share concerns, share issues, share best practices, essentially just giving them space to be able to support one another. That was an area that was indicated through survey data and research that was really important. Our high school recruitment programs are focusing on issues of equity and diversity and are intended to support and recruit diverse candidates into into higher education preparation for teacher candidacy. So we have a number of initiatives around that. We are also deploying strategies to better prepare our teachers to lead to increased retention. So you've heard us talk to you about the new certification structure, which should better prepare teachers. We are constantly surveying our teacher candidates a year out, a couple of years out, to find out areas of deficiency and work with our higher education institutions to make changes to our standards. For example, a few years ago, we heard that they needed more support working with students with special needs. So embedded in our revised standards is that, with that in mind, and more opportunities to work with students who have special needs before they become teachers, certified teachers. And finally, developing and communicating many pathways into the profession. So we are working really hard just to communicate with our general public and our school districts about all of the ways and pathways that you can use to become, to become a teacher in Michigan. So reciprocity from other states. We have accelerated programs. We have alternative route programs. We have career changer programs. So just any number of things to get people in classroom and work rotating them into our profession. Next slide, please. And that is all for us today.
Leah, I'll take it from here. Thank you very much for your presentation. This concludes our presentation this morning on the metrics data for the goal of increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage as well as efforts underway to increase the numbers of certified teachers in Michigan. And so, Dr. Rice, I am now turning the presentation back to you for a discussion with State Board of Education members.
Thank you, Ms. Alice, Ms. Breen, Ms. Snyder. Some questions?
Thank you. Just to go back to, it's very long and lots of information. Thank you, Leah. Just to go back to the beginning, a list for loan forgiveness for these teachers that are going to be going into the shortage areas. So they're put on a list, it sounds like, and they're eligible for loan forgiveness, I'm assuming with a certain set of things met, criteria met, correct? Okay. Is that something the current federal education department, is that part of their plan in addressing the teacher shortage?
I don't believe so. That's been in place certainly since I was teaching. And so I don't believe it was in response to a shortage initially. I'd have to go back and look at it historically, but I know it's been there for decades.
Okay, I just, it's the first time we've talked about it at the boards. I'm trying to figure out if anything new has happened with that in the last four years or so. You know, why, is this information that teachers have? Are they aware that if they go into these new, into these shortage areas, that they can be put on the list? Are there any shortage areas that were recently added to the list? Any changes?
Yeah, so we publish this list annually based on our data, as do all of the other states that participate, which I would assume is all of them. I think that we certainly notify school districts annually and as best we can, teachers, using the avenues that we have to talk directly with teachers. Again, when I was teaching, I worked in a school district that qualified because that's one of the other qualifications is you have to be in a qualifying school district. And I was certainly aware of it. I don't know how I became aware of it. I think our colleges of education also talk to teacher candidates about it because you have to work in a district that's identified, which is typically based on poverty level. And so encouraging teacher candidates who are interested in loan forgiveness to take placements, student teaching placements in those areas.
So it's been around for some time. Does anybody have a number of years that this has been around or an understanding of this strategy? You know, what, in terms of, I don't necessarily say effectiveness, but like, you know, if that, if that's available, I'm struggling to understand how it's helpful in the shortage areas.
I can certainly research when it first began for you and if they have an identified purpose going back that long and get back to you with that information.
Any changes to recently, especially, you know, pre, you know, just pre and during pandemic, how that has changed? That would be good. I just, I want to know how effective that is. And it's just interesting because you'd think that the shortage areas would be impacted greatly by the opportunity to have your name put on that list. So initiatives to grow your own, I think we were talking about that a while back. Is that still something that's happening actively? And what are the details around those initiatives in those areas that will help with better representation?
Yes, so we have, as I mentioned, yes, they're definitely still moving forward. We have a large number of Grow Your Own programs. So they kind of stem from two areas. We have districts that develop their own Grow Your Own programs. So for example, Detroit Public Schools, last I knew, was working with their paraprofessionals to run them. Any paraprofessional that was interested to run them through a Grow Your Own program to become teachers within the school district. So that's supported by us in that they can obtain permits and work as certified teachers of record while they're going through their programs. So it's a partnership sometimes between the district's program and our flexibilities that allow them to execute their programs. So that's one way. The other way is kind of our sponsored programs. So we have school districts that use, that are partnered with an alternative route. And so they use individuals that come through our alternative routes for staffing purposes in the fall and then work with them to culminate the execution of the program over time. We have our new high school programs that we'll be launching. Of course, we already had our existing CTE programs, but we're adding elements that are intended to expand access to high school students that typically can't, that don't have access to CTE programs. And as I mentioned, those in particular have a focus on equity and inclusion and content that is intended to recruit diverse students into the program. We modeled that after some very successful national programs, particularly Educators Rising. I don't know if you ever heard of that program. And the goal with that one is to provide the content, the curriculum, everything that districts need just to be able to really implement it wholesale and without a lot of cost and a lot of effort on their part. So we're excited about that. And then we have had in place for a number of years pathways for career changers. So if I'm an individual who is an electrician, for example, there is a way for me to work within school districts either temporarily or on a longer-term basis, using the flexibilities that we provide them. So we have, yeah, a lot of Grow Your Own programs.
So my question would be just sort of along So my question would be just sort of along the same lines of, you know, the loan forgiveness, the list, the shortage areas, how those work together, the benchmarks of what determines whether or not those things are effective. Same thing with the initiative programs. Will we have a concept in a certain period of time or to some degree be able to benchmark? These resources are all out there, the opportunity is there. So what, you know, when will we be able to say that this is, you know, been effective to some degree and if not to the degree that we would all hope it to be?
Yeah. I mean, I think that this metric is focused on that. So increasing the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage. And you, I mean, you could see from the information that we consider almost area, almost every area shortage at this point, based on the list that we showed you. The good news we saw was that we have held steady on the number of certified teachers, you know, even though we have increased. So we have a little bit, it was like a negative two or negative three percent decline in the appropriately certified teachers. That's largely due to the fact that we're hiring more teachers. We have had a decline of candidates over a couple of years. I'm actually bringing, I hope I'm bringing another presentation back to the board soon that will show you some additional workforce data over time. And you'll be able to see that while we've had a decline of teacher candidates, we're now back on the upswing. Some of these initiatives have been in place a number of years now. So we would consider that a good indication that things are going in the right direction.
So no, we're on the timeline. Yeah, maybe we can work on that.
Yeah, we can work on that. So it depends on the change and each change is going to have a different timeline. So right now, this will be the first year for our high school programs where we're presenting with them with the materials and providing them some funding. So it's kind of a startup year. We expect those programs to take off next year and the year after because they have to get them in course catalogs for high school. So certainly we'll be able to take a look. That would be an example. We need to look at a timeline specific to that program and say, you know, year one, we had, you know, nobody. Year two, we had 100 kids in it. Year three, we had 300 kids in it. And we're hopeful that we would be able to see them come out the other end. But that would take four or five years to be able to see that they actually exited out with a teaching certificate. So we have metrics in place. They vary and they're sometimes long to see the real outcome.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. President Olbridge?
So you may have just answered this question already, but I have been on this board long enough to remember when we were complaining about having too many certified elementary school teachers and basically saying, hey, if you get, if you get your certification at elementary, you're probably not going to find a job because there's not enough jobs there for you. We need science, we need math, we need special education. And now I see elementary is on your list of critical shortage. So my question is, is this a reflection of the fact that we told everybody to stop getting this degree? Or is it because we created so many new K-8 schools that we have a need now that we didn't have back then?
Yeah. So those are great questions. And I actually have been in the department long enough to remember that as well. So I think it's a couple of things. One, 10 years ago, when we were saying that, I feel like I'm really dating myself today during this presentation, 10 years ago, when we were saying that, I'm not sure that we actually were using real data. So we had a lot of anecdotal data. We know things that we heard in the field from school districts. And the department has worked really hard and our leadership has allocated resources that so we can look at actual data now. And that helps a lot. And I mean, I don't think so. I don't think it's anything that we did, Michigan did, because we're seeing the same thing nationally. We seem to be having the same challenges that every other state is having and that all of us are trying to work together to come forward with good solutions. You know, the challenge seems to be the profession as a whole is on a decline for a number of reasons that are not Michigan-specific.
Thank you, President Olbridge. Dr. Pugh?
So my question, actually, there were two slides that you put up and I was just, when you went to the next slide, then I wanted to see the slide again. And one was the one with rate and ethnicity. And I think it was just the teachers, the number of teachers and the time over time. If we could see that.
I need to rely on Mark to put that back up for me. And I'm guessing it's either slide 21, Mark, maybe? So these were the individuals that had it broken down, but I'm wondering if you mean the ratio slide, which was the very, the culminating slide in this area?
This one too. Because I was surprised to see that there was, if we could go back to, no, I do want to see this one, but there was the, there was one, the one that he initially had, that you had picked up that you want to see though. Go, if you can go back, back and, because I was surprised to see the increase. And can you again tell me the timeline for the data that's collected? Is the data actually 2020 data or was it collected in 2020?
Yep, I can. So these are the, I'm thinking about my words carefully, the fall rep collections. So these would be the most recent collected data.
So, okay, so it would have been, it would have been September of 2020, August, September of 2020.
Yeah. That can't, I apologize, that can't be right because I know we don't have those data yet. So they must have used spring 2020, which means end of year. So it would have been the end of last academic year.
Okay. So I mean, I think that one of the things that we were talking about, of course, we're looking beyond or broader than COVID. But COVID brings about a whole different set of issues and potential or known data changes that may not be reflected in this data.
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Okay. And then the other one that I wanted, and I think one of the other things to note, because though we see this increase, I think the numbers that we're starting at are pretty low, right? If we compare, if, can we go to the next one? And I'm looking at the teachers. So though there is an increase, I think that it's one of the lowest numbers. Nope, nope, I'm looking at, I was looking at wrong numbers. Okay. And we could just go back to the next, go to the next slide and then get to the ratio slide as well. And let me just make sure, so the, the black, African-American, the number of teachers, that was a percentage, that's six point, that was a percentage, correct?
On, so.
6.91.
Yes. So on, if we look at black, African-American and we look at 2020, 6.91% of our teachers are black or African-American and 17.63% of our students are.
Okay.
So then when you look at the ratio slide, if you flip forward, Mark, what that really means is, in 2020 for black, African-American, essentially you have one black teacher for every 43 black or African-American students.
What is, one, what is the, what is the suggested rate? What is the suggested ratio? Are any of our children needing that?
Yeah. So that's interesting that you asked that. I was wondering if anybody was going to ask that because notably absent from this metric is what is the right number, right? What's the right number of endorsements? What's the right number of positions? How many of any one thing do we need to eliminate gaps? So certainly, I think we would want to be closer to, so you figure a classroom of students, what's your ideal classroom size? Let's say 18, just for fun. You would certainly want to have one black teacher for 18 black students, right? Represented in a classroom. So I definitely think we want to be closer to those numbers, certainly not at 238 to one or 114 to one.
Yeah. And then, right. And so I guess I'm looking at our Hispanic, Latino children and then I'm looking Asian and black. And then I'm wondering if this would change if we were looking at different geographical areas or if we were looking at my district. So just.
So Dr. Pugh, so Dr. Pugh, the answer to your question is that this slide, however interesting, is also somewhat misleading as well because the distribution of both children and teachers have their distinctnesses. So you may have your children distributed in one way, you may have teachers distributed in another. And there are going to be children across the state, children of color, who never experience a teacher of color. There are going to be others that may experience three and four in their elementary school careers. So you can't tell a lot, as you know, from the, from the measures of central tendency, from the averages, because what any given child experiences in any given district may be very different, given the hiring practices in those particular districts.
Right. That's, that's another contextual data point or contextual information. But, and this one, this slide right here is just the ratio of teachers to students broken down by the race, ethnicity of that student. And, right, this isn't, there was a previous slide that looked at if, if a black child was taught by a black teacher. And so I, for me, I guess I was just putting some context, adding some context to the slides. And some takeaways for me is that the data does not include or add context to this time that we're in with COVID and the teachers that may be leaving the profession as a result of that. It also, when I look at the 6%, when I look at black and African-American or the other, Hispanic, Latino, only it looked like 1% of the teachers and 6% of black, African-American teachers are African, are African-American. And then when we look at this ratio, it may be different when we look at different, once we go into different districts and different schools. I mean, and some of our schools that we have labeled as have, as having problems, that this, this ratio may, may be even, even wider.
Yes, that's right. If we could go back a couple of slides to the relationship between the percentage of African-American students, percentage of African-American teachers in the state. So take a look, take a look at this. So you basically got two and a half, almost three to one ratio between percentage of students, percentage of African-American teachers. But importantly, what any individual child experiences may be very different from this. So you will have children, to your point, that get more. You'll have children that get very, very much less. It really is district by district across the state. And in some cases, it's school by school across the state. I think what, what you're interested in, what we're interested in certainly is the Johns Hopkins study, which showed a couple of years ago that an African-American child that had a teacher of color prior to the end of his or her third grade year was 13% more likely to graduate from high school. If he or she had two teachers of color, was 32% more likely to graduate from high school, that there was something in the role modeling that was important in that regard. These numbers don't get you there. Neither this chart nor the chart later in the presentation will get you there. They are descriptive, they are interesting, but they are, they are not inferential statistics. They are solely descriptive statistics. You bet. Thank you. Ms. Fecto?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about the interruption before one of my kids needed some help. So I hope I didn't miss anything on the presentation. But as far as the loan forgiveness, that was, it's called the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. It was established in 2007. It was expanded in 2018. And in 20, I believe in 2018 or maybe it was the summer of 2019, the AFT sued DeVos because 99% of the applicants were denied. It applies not only to teachers, but to nurses and other public officials. But there's been some serious problems in the administration of people actually getting the loan forgiveness, as is written. It's poorly communicated. I know if you're going to really, I think you need to reach out to people in financial aid offices and the teacher prep programs, not necessarily the faculty of teacher prep programs because they don't deal with the financial aid. So I would, so hopefully this will be corrected, but the, the loan forgiveness program, at least that the federal government provides, is really troubled and has a very overly complicated process, which has led to huge numbers of people being denied the loan forgiveness. I know that there was something like 700 million appropriated for it and only 27 million was dispersed in, in 2019. So that's just something to keep in mind if you had questions about why more people aren't using the loan forgiveness program. It's dysfunctional. So my question was, so, you know, so I see that the numbers of special education teachers are saying is neutral, which seems to imply that there's not a shortage, which is not the case. So I'm wondering, so it's, but you say it's not, it's not considered a shortage area because it's the number of students coming out? Is that true? Is it, am I?
It's definitely a shortage area, which is why it's represented here. And the arrow doesn't indicate that there isn't a shortage. It just indicates that we haven't had great swings in the number of endorsements that we've produced over five years. So we haven't had more than a 100 increase or less than 100 decrease. We're consistently maintaining producing about the same number of special education endorsements, which isn't enough because we know we have a critical shortage in the area of special education. So it is definitely a shortage and we definitely need to see an increase.
So did I miss?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just to note that, that special education is arguably the most complicated of global areas because when we talk about special education endorsed teachers, we're talking about 13 different categories. So you can have an exacerbation of shortages in particular areas and you can be just fine in, in others or relatively fine in, in others. So certainly this is a major issue across the state and I would argue a significant issue across the country as well.
So did I miss a slide that clearly indicated it was a critical shortage area? Like it's like a very high need because it seemed, the only slide I saw was that we're just producing the same amount. Did I miss something?
It's on a slide associated with critical shortage, that all of those, that all of those areas that were listed are critical shortage areas and they, and special education is among that half dozen or so areas of historical critical shortage. CTE, special education, math, science, bilingual education, world language. Yeah.
Yeah. But see, that seems to imply that it's, we're producing the same amount. So it's not, it just doesn't, to me, capture the, you know, just how serious that shortage is. It seems to indicate that somehow we're evenly producing. And so it's not, I guess the number you kept saying, look at the ones over 100 and those are the ones that need to be focused on. And I think that might be not, you know, I, I, I'm just, if you're not looking at where the, if there's a shortage already and we're not producing enough, then that's not really captured in this data. So that, I just wanted to point that out. And also the point that you made, Superintendent Rice, that, you know, certain areas, like there's maybe sufficient LD, you know, you know, sort of the basic special ed endorsement, but when you need extra endorsements for like AI or CI or whatever it is, that that's where those shortages are. And I, and with like what Pam was saying, I think it would be helpful to see in a geographic area, maybe urban, rural, suburban, to get a better feeling of either locations or types of schools that have a more difficulty in retaining the certified teachers that they need. So that, if there could, I don't know if that's, I'm asking if that could be fleshed out a little bit more in terms of narrowing in on where the shortages are. And. And because my, my feeling is, my guess is that it's worse in certain areas and rural and urban areas more than suburban areas. So it would be interesting to see that and to hone in on that. Let's see, no, I think I had one more. I was writing them down. I'm very interested in the Grow Your Own Paraprofessional Program as well. And as you know, I'm also interested in finding, making it easier for teachers who want to go into these high need ed, because one of the main barriers is just having the money to do it, as well as having it structured in a way that they can actually find the time, manage the time to get to the classes and develop that. And I know we've had a conversation about that. So I, I also think it's important when we're looking at high needs areas to think about, if there was some way to get the improvement on the special ed loan forgiveness from the feds, that would be great. And if we had, you know, it would have to be legislated, I think, dedicated resources to help us pay to get the, or to give some extra economic support for people, like the parapros. They don't make a lot of money. They're going to be paying for classes. It would be great to be able to supplement their tuition. So I don't know if that's part of the conversation, but I think the financing of the education, especially for people that might not have the economic ability and would be really helpful. And when we look at diversity, I think not just racial diversity, but economic diversity is also important.
So, so just two quick responses to your two quick points. First of all, we will be sharing more on both Grow Your Own and Teach Your Cadet programs soon with the board. My hope is that it will be next month. It is conceivable that it will be in January, but my hope is that it will be next month and we can share more about some of the exciting things that are going on in this area and some of our plans for expansion in this area. So that's one thing. And we, we have the same interest in Grow Your Own that you do, Ms. Fecto. We believe that the, the essence of a great teacher is the relationship with his or her students. And so many of our support staff have these relationships already with our young people. What they need is help being trained up as teachers so that they can use those great relationships in a different way in school. It's not the only answer, but it is one of many answers to the teacher shortage. So that's one. Two, you raised the issue about data. Just, just to be absolutely clear, special education is a major shortage area in Michigan and across the country. There's no question about it. We are in some ways hamstrung by the data availability in the state of Michigan. And we are working to try to address the data gaps as we work on trying to address the teacher shortage at the same time. So would we like some of the data to which you refer? Absolutely. Are we going to work toward that? You bet. Do we have access to it right now? We do not. So I just want to be clear. Our feeling about the shortage is very similar to yours, but we don't necessarily have the completeness of data that we would like to have at this moment. Ms. Breen, Mr. Howell at SEPI and others are working to flesh out those data needs. And those conversations have included conversations with the, with the governor's office, number one, the governor herself, number two, with the legislature, number three. So anyway, I share, I share that. Ms. Snyder, a question? And then Mr. Bondano, a comment?
I think my first question was already answered, so we're good there. But I just wanted to echo that I share Michelle's passion about making the PSLF program more functional. And so whatever way that we can encourage that or be a part of that conversation, I think is very important. But also, so understanding the timeline of things too is helpful. What was the expansion in 2018? Maybe if you could report to us precisely what that expansion was, if that gave states any room to encourage further or differently? I just think it needs to be made effective. So if, if we can be a part of that conversation, understand the expansion from 2018, we could probably continue to, to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Bondano?
Hi, my apologies, my computer wasn't unmuting. So my, my comment is sort of paybacking off of what Ms. Fecto just said, we were talking about the, the money and so on to encourage those and the Grow Your Own especially. And this may be covered, as, as you were saying, Dr. Rice, in the presentation upcoming for us and what's being done. But my comment was simply about a trend that I have noticed, both when I was a student in college working towards becoming a teacher and since then, that there are a number of candidates who may even go through the entire program of teacher preparedness in college and then they are stopped at the last minute because they can't afford a one semester unpaid internship as a student teacher. That that is a major stumbling block for many people. So when we talk about increasing the diversity of the teaching staff and, as was mentioned, both the economic diversity as well as the racial diversity, and of course, those things are sometimes going hand in hand. I, I think that's another area that we can look into if we're not already looking into it, is, is can we in some way provide, you know, for qualified candidates making student teaching a paid position? It was a struggle for me, certainly. I, I didn't have a paid position during that time. And unfortunately, my wife also lost her job at that time and we really, really struggled to get me through my student teaching. So I know it's a hurdle for many people. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
It, it is a hurdle. It's been raised with our educational prep providers, number one. They acknowledge it is a hurdle, number two. We acknowledge it's a hurdle, number three. In fact, we have granted, in a number of cases, the ability to, to be a student teacher and to be on contract at the same time if there is no available teacher certificated to be hired. And Ms. Breen can perhaps speak to that to greater, to greater detail. But it's absolutely an issue. There, there's no question about it. It's a big, it's a big deal. And it's particularly an issue for, for those people who are trying to pivot in their careers. You know, it's all fine, well and good to say, you know, in, in your case, for example, moving from a paraprofessional to a teacher, it's all fine, well and good to say, you've got these great relationships. We'll help get you through school. Well, helping get you through school is helping you get through that last semester. Or in the case of Michigan State, the last year. And so that's a, that's a pretty substantial challenge. And we're going to have to begin to rethink that on a more global basis, perhaps in the state. Certainly, it's something that we've done in miniature. Ms. Breen, could you add to that, please?
Yeah, I can.
Up, you froze up.
Internal budgetary issues. There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies, I lost all of my camera there for a second. So there isn't anything that prohibits it. And we also acknowledge, however, that typically when a student teacher is paid by a school district, they are serving as a teacher of record. So the district has such a shortage, they're bringing in their student teacher on to serve as the actual teacher in a role where they're really still supposed to be in a learning capacity. And so it isn't something that we encourage because we want student teachers to have the opportunity, those supported clinical experiences before they become the teacher of record. However, it's possible. Ideally, we'd be in a place where, in other professions, where all student teachers are paid for their internship time and, and they still have the mentor and support and all of the things and don't have to serve as the teacher of record. So as Dr. Rice said, I think that's something that we're working toward and being mindful that those actions have to occur during the school year and a certain level of income can harm people's ability to obtain student aid. So we also have to balance income for student aid in there.
Thank you very much, Ms. Breen, Mr. Bondano. Other, other thoughts, questions, comments, concerns on this important topic? Because it is important and because we anticipated the need to have more than one bite of the apple, it's our hope and expectation that we will be back with you next month to talk about additional data and additional efforts to work on this important issue. Appreciate, appreciate the board's time and focus. Thank you, Ms. Allison, Ms. Breen. We are sitting at 11:55. The next agenda item is Presentation on Interrupting Prolonged Sitting with Activity. That's something that I want to do as quickly as possible. The Impact at Home Program is an online free use initiative designed to be a year-long daily routine. Interrupting prolonged sitting with activity was created during the pandemic to help children stay active at home. This is an informational presentation. It does not require board action. Dr. Rebecca Hassan, Associate Professor of Kinesiology and Nutritional Health and Director of the Childhood Disparities Research Laboratory at the University of Michigan. Ms. Samantha Wines Weiss, K-12 Physical Education Health and Virtual Academy Mentor at Clarkston Community Schools. And Mr. Matthew Mayer, K-5 Elementary Physical Education Teacher at Clarenceville School District in Livonia, will be, will be presenting to us. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, for that wonderful introduction. And we recognize that we are the only thing standing in between your next activity break. So we will try to make this as succinct as possible. But this is a great opportunity and you're going to see a PowerPoint slides come up in a moment that really describe some of the work that we've been doing at a time when our children need it the most, particularly as it relates to physical activity. So when you go to the next slide, you'll see a graph, an infographic from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that really shows us all of the different ways in which we know how to get kids moving. And as you can see in this figure, most of those types of physical activity or most of those different opportunities really come around the school environment. So daily PE is the number one thing that gets our kids moving to provide 23 minutes of physical activity. I've done a lot of work with teachers across the state in terms of providing physical activity breaks in the classroom and training teachers on how to do that effectively. We see that after-school programs, parks and walking to and from school, like safe routes to school, are other opportunities for children to meet the 60 minutes of daily physical activity every single day. But as you all know, during COVID, when schools shut down, many of these opportunities were reduced or even taken away when we had school closures. And it is predicted that our children are, there's going to be a 2% increase throughout the nation in childhood obesity as a function of the lack of physical activity opportunities that children currently have or had during the school closures. We've even heard from nurses in Lansing that as children are returning to schools, excuse me, returning to the doctor's office either for a flu shot or for a wellness checkup, that they're coming back 10, 20 pounds heavier. And so the opportunity to provide more physical activity to children at this time was of the utmost importance. And when we had the opportunity to work with Dr. Pamela Pugh, who again, made us aware of that problem and wanted to partner with us to solve that problem, we all jumped at the opportunity to do so. As you'll see in the next slide, what did that mean? Well, it meant that we needed to create something while children were sheltering in place to help promote physical activity. And when Dr. Pugh called me, one of the comments that we made is that, well, teachers are teaching online. Teachers are using videos to teach. Can't we do the same thing for exercise? And from that conversation, we had an opportunity to think through and think about how were we going to increase physical activity and provide that opportunity to all 1.5 million children in our state? We recognize that going outside, you know, there, again, there was restrictions on playing in parks. Not every child has a safe neighborhood that they live in to where they can just either play in their backyard or play in their front street. And so what was a way in which we could promote physical activity that would be accessible to everyone? And we decided to focus on the home environment. Again, that's one of the most underutilized, understudied environments, even when you think about the comprehensive physical activity plan promoted by the CDC. All of the other aspects are pretty well documented, but there's not as much in terms of family engagement. So we really wanted to focus on that home environment. So what did we do? We developed Impact at Home and this was taken from the work that we had already done in school classrooms called Impacted School. And we had a rapid response initiative to just move it into the home by working with physical education teachers across the state to develop 20-minute exercise videos. And these are focusing on health-enhancing physical activity that are freely available on our program website. One of the beauties about this time was that we were able to work with many different partners. So as you can see at the bottom of this infographic, there are several different organizations and I really want to give my thanks and gratitude to MDE, who are one of the first partners to join onboard, recognizing that this could be very beneficial to our students. We also had, as we had different media attention, the Detroit Lions and Detroit Pistons signed on because they already also had initiatives that they were working on and they wanted to promote youth physical activity as well. SHAPE, which is the physical education organization within the state. MISHKA, which is the School Health Coordinators Organization. And MEMSPO, which is the Elementary School Teacher Organization, excuse me, Principal Organization. We're just a few to name that joined the team to really promote youth physical activity at this time. And one of our national partners is Playworks. They have a organization in Michigan as well. But all of us came together to really quickly respond to the need of increased physical activity. So as you'll see on the next slide, this is just a screenshot from our research website that hosts the program. And you can see this is hosted through the University of Michigan Exercise and Sport Science Initiative to where students can go right on there to see the state support that we received from MDE supporting the program, the activity videos that are freely accessible on that website and different resources that are available, both to teachers and physical education resources that are available as well. And then here, this Missing Mandate is a blog that myself and other members of the American College of Sports Medicine wrote to really bring attention to promoting physical activity during the COVID pandemic. So if we were to click on the button for activity videos, you'll see on the next slide that you would be able to see these wonderful videos. So this is, you'll hear from soon is Sam, who's one of our instructors. And her videos were one of the most watched videos because as you'll be able to see in a few minutes, that she incorporated adaptations in her videos. We recognize that while may, everyone may be able to exercise at home, they have different ability levels. And so she strategically incorporated different activity levels, both high intensity and adapted exercises to help children of any ability status to move at home. In the next slide, you'll see a screenshot from the video from Matt Mayer, who you'll hear from in a few minutes as well, who incorporated videos. He worked with his children, who are so adorable. And you'll, you're going to love the little video clip that you'll see in a movie. And it really is to emphasize the whole point of getting families moving. While we're targeting children, we also hope that we can promote physical activity among their parents, grandparents as well. And so these videos have really been, those are our two PE teachers that have had the highest view rate based on the videos and the content that they have included. On the next slide, you will see just all the media outlets. So again, just because we build a program doesn't necessarily mean that people will watch the videos or even know about the videos. So we harness the power of media over the summertime when we launched the program July 6th and received quite a bit of media attention to where we could publicize the program, allow teachers to know that the program existed. We used our own Facebook and Twitter accounts and worked with the Detroit News, which again, helped more partners come to the table to promote youth physical activity. And we chose to do taped videos because you'll see on the next slide, as we use a Vimeo channel to host the videos, the next slide, as we use a Vimeo channel to host the videos, those videos can also be downloaded so that children don't have to have streaming access in order to watch the videos. As you can see from this map, it shows you that over 90% of households within Michigan do actually have at least one smartphone or computer within their household. And so they, students could use maybe the iPad that they have from school to download them, or they could use their parents' phone to have access to these videos. And without any money, we have already been able to have a program reach of, reaching 80 Michigan cities throughout the state, 32 Michigan counties, even because it's on the internet and it's freely available, we have webpage views from 35 states across the country and 25 countries around the world. So we, it's great that we can have many people, not only just in the state or across the state, but across the country and across the world that have access to free videos. If you're asking who is actually watching the videos, this map actually really gives you a good indication. The dark purple regions is where most of the views have come from. Most of it is in the southern part of the state. We have a few counties up north and one county in the UP. So we definitely have more work to do in order to increase the, the reach of the program within the state. But as you'll see on the next slide, we were nominated to submit an application to receive COVID CARES funding. And we received that funding, which is going to help increase the reach and access of the program, as we are partnering with Detroit Public Television. And the videos, some of the videos will be made in studio so that all of the students again can see the videos on TV and don't even have to worry about internet access. With those funds, we're also creating an entire library of 250 exercise videos, again, developed by our physical education teachers. We are working with school psychologists and school social workers and administrators to also develop family engagement toolkits that were really focused on stress and COVID and how physical activity and engaging in physical activity can really help to reduce some of the child stress that we're seeing. We're also using the funds to increase accessibility for some of these videos by adding Spanish subtitles. And then as we heard earlier in the presentations this morning, we're working with program evaluators to really measure the effectiveness of the program. So the reach is one thing, and having people watch them, but are they actually doing the exercise breaks? That's one thing that we're going to look into, and we will be looking into as the videos continue to be posted online. So it's our goal to post five videos online every single week of the rest of the year, and that there will be a nice library available for students, especially once school gets out, because we know that most of the weight gain that we see in our children usually happens during the summer, not during the school year. So we want to make sure that the program is up and ready. And there's plenty of videos to choose from once the summer gets here. On the next slide, you'll see, I cannot take all the credit, there's been a wonderful team of individuals that have been working since day one on this project. And these, you can see the program partners here, for everyone who has really pitched in and really helped use their creative juices to figure out how can we reach every student across the state. And we're continuing to work together as we continue to promote the program. And I'll end by showing you a wonderful picture on the next slide of not only our parents using the program at home, but we've even had classroom teachers start to use the program. This is a classroom in Detroit of students using the videos, a teacher that, if you look in the video, that is Ms. Alana Price. She is the Wellness Coordinator for Detroit Public Schools. And she created a video for the program. Actually, she's going to create 10 videos for the program. And it's just great to see our kids having fun and moving in the classroom in a safe, socially-distanced manner, but then also giving them the opportunities to do that at home as well. So I wanted now turn it over to, as we see the videos being uploaded, we're going to take a few minutes, but I want to turn it over to Sam first, her video. You're going to get to see one minute of Sam's video. And Sam is on the phone. And Sam, just tell us a little bit about your video while they are uploading your video.
Good afternoon. So nice to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. The inspiration for my video is, one of my mottos is fitness is for everybody. And I really believe that everyone can fitness, no matter who they are, is finding the appropriate mix for you. So, and then I, as I was making the video, as I called up my handicapped able friend, Joey, who I actually used to work out with at a CrossFit gym, like, Joey, like, you want to come help me with a video for kids? And he's like, this is sweet, of course. So he got along. My other helper there, Madison, she, oh, I'm so sorry, what?
Go for it, Sam.
Oh, so, um, I got Madison to come in so that we could show different levels. That way she could do a higher intensity because sometimes our kids can do a higher intensity. And I want to give them many options so they can customize their fitness to really improve their own health.
So over here, I have Joey. He is my handicapped able friend who will be demonstrating accommodated movements. So if there's a movement that you can't do for some reason, you just can't move that way, no worries. Fitness is for everybody. So Joey is going to show you different ways that he can still do fitness with us. Over here on my other side, I have Madison. And she's going to demonstrate some of the more advanced movements and have a little higher intensity in the workout than me. And that's okay, too. So no matter what your fitness level is, we have something that you can do because fitness is for everyone. So you can do this. I'm going to have a timer going so you'll be able to hear right along with us and stay on track with us. Let's get ready. All right, friends, 60 seconds. Get ready.
Get ready.
So that was just a quick example of what Sam is doing with her videos. I will now turn it over to Matt to show you what he's doing with his videos. He's actually created a whole spinoff of ESPN, which is really great. So Matt, tell us a little bit about your videos.
All right. Well, Matt Mayer here. I've been teaching physical education for 16 years now. I believe in building healthy, lifelong living habits. In my videos, I try to include kind of the same message that Sam has. I have an acronym of Bringing Your Boom, which stands for your brilliant, original, optimistic me, kind of saying that, raise brilliant and original in their own way. Stay optimistic, you'll, you know, everybody has different fit levels and ability levels. So in my videos, I've included like an ESPN theme. I try to go cross-curricular as much as possible. We talk about not only all the muscle anatomy, but as we're stretching each of the muscles, we'll do grade level sight words. So as we hold a stretch, it might be, you know, you'll see on the screen, like flashcards on the grade level sight words. I also do skip counting along with that, with the Count from Sesame Street. I try to include him, you know, so four, eight, well, depending on what skip counting you're working on. My videos so far have included on fitness, stretch the exercises with sight words, with skip counting, dynamic stretching. I'm currently working on a yoga video and skill development. I've done basketball, overhand throw, underhand throw with the backyard Olympics, locomotor skills, hand striking with volleyball. I've done some health-related stuff on finding your target heart range, and as well as a special Halloween episode on glucose and glycemic index and glycemic loads. So I try to include as much of mission, content standards, and benchmarks as I can in each video, as well as trying to get cross-curricular. And I guess that's my spiel.
Thank you, Matt. Let's go ahead and watch his video. Having difficulty with the sound, but as you can see, you can see his ESPN theme across it. And he's giving instructions right now in terms of what are they going to be doing for the day in his video. And he's also telling you that he is introducing his children, who will also be in the video. They're going to be doing outside activities. And so he's giving specific instructions on that. So here he is, he's giving instructions.
This is Mark. I'm going to share again. It, I did run into a problem with my machine on sharing the audio, so.
No problem. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I was getting error messages on the computer. How's that?
Get our heart rate up a little bit.
Can't see it. Here we go.
Our knees are going to be driving up as high as we can and each stride like that. We're not going to try to take long strides. We're going to try to take short strides to maximize the effort we can get out of this. And this is what it should look like. Very good.
So we thank you for watching the videos and for listening to our presentation. And we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Professor Hassan, our two teachers. That was terrific. Questions or comments from board members? I feel like we should have participated during this. Should have gotten up and role modeled. The state board that moves together grooves together. Dr. Pugh, Ms. Fecto. Dr. Pugh then Ms. Fecto.
Well, just adding commentary and just thanking Rebecca for her leadership. I'm hearing an echo. I'm sorry if there's an issue. But we had a request that I think I brought to the board where we were asked if sports and athletics would be back to normal by the spring. And I could not answer that question. And so what I suggested is that we bring together some sports folks and, and so Rebecca, I just happened to be introduced to her. And she had a program and really brought a team together. So that was great. And thanking the department, Dr. Rice and Sheila and other staff who really just stepped up to make this happen. And so looking forward to it being utilized even further across the state as things have come together. And again, just appreciate the department, appreciate you, Dr. Hassan, for making this happen.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. And we appreciate your advocacy in helping to springboard this program. There'll be a variety of puns in the next five minutes. Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, just a quick question. My daughter is a senior health and phys ed teacher. And I just wanted to make sure that if the resources that you have available, they can, it's the website, that ESSI website, that is there. So that's, I can access all of this stuff from there? Or is it another? Okay.
You can access everything from that website. And then if you want to go straight to the videos, we have a Vimeo channel that if you just type in Impact at Home, you'll be able to access all those videos as well. And once we finish producing the Detroit Public Television videos, those will also be freely available on our Vimeo channel as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Other, other comments or questions from board members? Comments or questions from board members?
And I might have missed this because I miss things, but we will also have social emotional supports that will be provided with this. And when we first started, I know we had Earl Kuratyn from the Pistons, and then we had Dr. Karen Williams Weaver, former mayor of Flint, but who was a child psychologist. And now, Dr. Hassan, you've even expanded that even more to make sure that the two are coupled together.
Yes. So we, yes, as Dr. Pugh mentioned, there will be a family engagement kit and videos will be available in that. And so parents can engage in the conversation with their children around stress and physical activity that really incorporates a lot of social emotional skills in there. And we also are going to be developing with Saginaw ISD health teachers nutrition videos. So there'll be about 50 videos that are dedicated to nutrition because we do know that children are also struggling in that area in addition to the physical activity right now. So it's, it's really trying to address the whole child model as we are looking at all the different health aspects of the child in the home. And I just loved the presentation this morning that focused on indoor air quality because we are also adding resources to our Red's website around indoor health, indoor air quality. Because now that it's getting a little bit cooler, maybe not this week, but next week, folks are going to be moving indoors. And so there are steps that children and their parents can take to increase their air quality. And we have, in working with the American College of Sports Medicine, we've come up with a whole list of how children can do that, to increase their air quality in their own homes.
Thank you, Professor Hassan. Food for, food for the body and food for thought as well. Thank you very much. Our president has put in the chat, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate your leadership. We appreciate the leadership of our two teachers as well. It is 12:20. We are going to break for lunch. We are going to return at 1:15. Keep moving, keep grooving. We will see you at 1:15. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.